Item seven, presentation from Santa Barbara County Public Health Department on regional preparedness and efforts related to the coronavirus COVID-19.
So, staff, whenever you're, whenever you're ready, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Males. I am the Madam Mayor and Members of Council, sorry. My name is Chris Males. I'm the Training and EMS Battalion Chief with the City Fire Department. This afternoon, we've brought quite a group of individuals with us to talk to you a little bit about COVID-19. A little bit of background, COVID-19 began in the Chinese province of Wuhan and quickly spread worldwide. Most up to date, we've got approximately 118,000 cases worldwide with about approximately 3,000 deaths and 47,000 people that have recovered. As of right now, to allay some of the public's fears, we have zero confirmed cases in the county of Santa Barbara. However, we're all aware that this is a changing issue by the minute. One word we'd really like to reiterate today is collaboration. Collaboration is very important when we have a situation like this. We're hoping that after today's discussion, our city leaders, citizens, and visitors to Santa Barbara will feel reassured that the city is placing great emphasis on the issue and is doing our very best to keep people safe. All of our personnel are networked in at a local, state, and federal level. We are receiving sound information and basing our decisions on facts, evidence, and medical best practices. From a first responder's perspective regarding the fire department, your firefighters are equipped with all recommended personal protective equipment. We received additional training and are ready to respond to any incident in the city of Santa Barbara. Next, before we get started, I'd like to make a few quick introductions so you know some of the people that are up here with me this afternoon. From the city of Santa Barbara, if you have any questions regarding the airport, Henry Thompson is here. Any questions regarding waterfront, Mike Wiltshire is here. From your city fire department, we have Fire Chief Eric Nickel, Operations Division Chief Lee Waldron, Fire Marshal Joe Pore, Yoli McGlinchey, the emergency manager, Liliana Encinas, our bilingual public outreach coordinator, and we also have Dr. Jason Przowski. Dr. Przowski is a local emergency physician, and we are also fortunate to have him as our fire department's medical director. Dr. Przowski has spent a great deal of time up to today with our firefighters, making sure that we're educated and well-prepared. We can't thank him enough for that. From the county of Santa Barbara, we have Paige Batson and Dr. Henning Ansorg, the public health officer. And from Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital, we have Ron Werft, President and CEO. We have Dr. David Fisk, who is the Head of Infection Control at Cottage Hospital. And we have Dr. Brett Wilson, who is the Medical Director of the Emergency Department at Cottage Hospital. With the aforementioned subject matter experts, you really don't need to hear any more from me. And we're hoping that between all of us, we can answer any and all questions that you may have. This is a wealth of knowledge, training, and experience with us today, and we'll begin the presentation with Paige Batson, Dr. Henning Ansorg, and Dr. David Fisk. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Your, your name is Matson, M-A-T-S-O-N?
It's B-A-T-S-O-N.
B-A-T-S-O-N, thank you.
Yes, so, good afternoon, good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. My name is Paige Batson, and I am the Deputy Director for the Community Health Division of Santa Barbara County Public Health Department. So, I want to thank you today for having us here to talk to you a little bit about what's happening with COVID-19. As you know, things are rapidly evolving ever since we learned of the outbreak beginning in Wuhan, China. And there's a lot, there's a lot going on in terms of updated case numbers. Everybody's really concerned about updated case numbers. We are receiving a lot of daily guidance from the California Department of Public Health and the CDC in terms of what we need to do as far as testing and public health prevention recommendations and so forth. So I'd like to begin my presentation, as was already stated, that we have zero cases in Santa Barbara County. And we currently do not have any individuals that we are highly suspicious of that are pos, going to be possible cases. And that's what we usually refer to as persons under investigation. And so, as you know, the, the outbreak has spread. It is now spread to other countries, Italy, South Korea, Iran, Hong Kong, Japan, and so forth. And as a result, it's, and because it's spreading so fast, it is, it has, had reached the U.S. And at that time, on January 31st, the U.S. declared a public health emergency. And on March 4th, due to cases that we were seeing here in California, Governor Newsom also declared a state of emergency. On March 5th, the Department of Managed Healthcare directed full, full-service commercial plans and medical plans to ensure that their enrollees have a reduced cost sharing to zero. And why this is important is because it allows for individuals who are concerned, who are having symptoms of, of COVID-19, that they would be able to go and seek screening and, testing access without being concerned about payer sources or deductibles and so forth. So now, individuals who have any COVID-19-related expenses, i.e. an emergency room, hospitalization, et cetera, will be able to do that without any cost sharing. So this is really good for us because the sooner we learn of a case in Santa Barbara County, the, the sooner public health can begin to implement public health interventions. Additionally, on March 8th, we receive updated guidance for schools, colleges, and for large public events. And those, those documents provide a lot more detail than previous documents about what would we need to do and when would we begin social distancing, especially for schools that are very concerned about when do they close, how will they close, when, in that kind of discussion. Those types of decisions are made in, with very close discussion and consultation with our health officer. But those documents are, are very explicit, and Dr. Ansorg will speak to those a little later. Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. In terms of cases, yesterday morning, we had 423 cases in the U.S. And in Santa Barbara, we, I mean, Santa Barbara, in California, we had 133. Notice this says 114. That's because the numbers are changing consistently. So this morning, this was submitted to you yesterday, early afternoon, so this is, we now have 133 cases. 24 of them are repatriated, 44 of them are travel-related, and 28 are person-to-person, and 19 are community transmission, and 18 are of unknown sources. So I just want to say a little bit about the numbers. The numbers will vary depending upon what source you go to. There will be lag times, there will be, sometimes the media gets numbers beforehand and so forth. And also, the reporting may be a little different. For example, sometimes they will report a presumptive case in their numbers. Presumptive, all that means is that they yet to, the, the individuals are yet to be confirmed. So, for us in the public health department, when we are reporting numbers, we are reporting numbers strictly from the California Department of Public Health or CDC. So, don't be alarmed when you see differing numbers. So, today, we are still receiving notifications from the California Department of Public Health on travelers. We're seeing less and less in terms of those individuals that are traveling from mainland China. So, also, the CDC has broadened its, its testing criteria for what constitutes a person under investigation. This is very important because early on in the outbreak, it was, the testing was very limited for two reasons. One is that there wasn't a lot of testing available, but also because they were restricting testing to only those individuals that had travel-related exposure and who had symptoms. Now, they pretty much have broadened it, and they allow for that, for medical providers to, to make that clinical decision as to whether or not testing is indicated. And, and that'll be based on, on risk factors and signs and symptoms of, of COVID. Additionally, we're expanding it to include for hospitalized individuals to be tested so that it can inform hospitals about whether or not isolation precautions are necessary. So that's very important for our hospital system. Additionally, we, we are, they're encouraging testing for individuals greater than 65 years of age because they are more at risk. And, and so, and for those with chronic medical conditions such as lung, lung and, and heart disease. So, these are the individuals that are, that tend to get more ill and require hospitalization. And lastly, we still are, will continue to monitor those individuals who have exposed, been exposed to an, to a suspected or a confirmed case within that 14-day period, or who have traveled to those geographic areas that I mentioned earlier. Those would be individuals that would be at risk if they present with symptoms. Okay, so, in Santa Barbara, so far, we've monitored 45 individuals that we were notified by the California Department of Public Health. 20 of them have cleared. Currently, we have five that we are still monitoring for the 14-day period. And 18 are, the 18 others that were referred to us either, they didn't meet the criteria, they either were self-referred and did not have those risk factors that, that were required, or Santa Barbara was not actually their destination. And so, and so currently, we only have one person that we're, that we're pending notification because we get the, the individual's name and then we have to go out and find the individual. So, so far, that process has worked really well. Public health is prepared to, to do that monitoring. We have a very solid system in that we do this every day in our Disease Control and Prevention Unit. We do it for TB and measles and everything else. So, so we're pretty confident in our, in our process. Lastly, we have our, we activated our Department Operations Center on March 6th. We're open from 9:00 to 12:00, Monday through Friday. And the main purpose for that is to be able to respond to our medical health system in terms of whether they need resources, whether masks or ventilators or what have you. So with that, I will pass it over to Dr. Ansorg, our health officer.
Thanks, Ms. Batson. When you said 45, you mean, and you said Santa Barbara, you mean Santa Barbara County?
Yes.
Not just the city?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And thank you for being here. We're, I didn't say that, first of all. We're so grateful you're here. A lot of people watch our meetings, and so, maybe more than they watch the county meetings. And so, this is good information that you're giving to everybody. We're super grateful. Dr. Ansorg, thank you.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, my name is Dr. Henning Ansorg. I'm the Public Health Officer for Santa Barbara County, therefore also for the, you know, communities inside Santa Barbara County. Let me reassure you that as the public health department, we do consider this situation to be serious, and we are prepared and we continue to prepare. This is what we have been trained to do. And all of us in our dedicated department have ample experience with disasters, with, we have been on the front lines with different communicable diseases in the past, from Ebola, MERS, over to H1N1, and all sorts of communicable diseases, and have been successful. As the health officer, I've been, I've been given the honor and the authority to make decisions with regard to limiting movement of, you know, citizens when it is important for the public good and public health. I do take this not lightly, and we are really in very close contact with the CDC on a federal level, as well with the State Health Department called CDPH in Sacramento, and our Southern California Health Officers because our situation sometimes is slightly different from Northern California, and with our community partners, Cottage Health here in the South County, obviously, Santa Barbara, and large clinics, small clinics. And we are in very close communication. Dr. Fisk and myself are on the phone several times a day, you know, discussing cases and scenarios and so forth. We have a very robust emergency response team in, at the county, which is reaching out to nursing homes, helping them to prepare appropriately for an epidemic that is, you know, in the making. Fortunately, it hasn't spread locally here in the county, but all of us physicians, I probably can say that we believe this is just a matter of time, that we will have cases in the city of Santa Barbara and the county of Santa Barbara. Our neighboring county to the south, Ventura, just had their first case, but it was travel-related to one of the cruise ships. And no other cases, so forth. To the north, our neighbor, San Luis Obispo, do not have any cases, just like us, at this point. The health officer of San Luis Obispo today sent out a message to the constituents there to recommending social distancing at this point already because of the fact that we do believe that containment is probably no longer an option. In public health, we consider containment an option when we try to isolate sick people in the beginning and try to slow down the, the, the spread of virus disease. We've been quite successful, especially also due to the federal mandatory travel bans and so forth, and mandatory, you know, self-isolation and quarantining of travelers coming from China that started early in February. But now, we are in the first week of March, and the landscape has shifted significantly. So, we have reached out to all schools, school districts, K-12, to institutions of higher education as well. You see organizations, City College, Westmont College, and so forth, and they all have emergency plans in place. They are all advised to increase their disinfection of, you know, frequently-used surfaces, and they're all advised to not allow any sick teachers, staff members, or students on their campuses. And they're, we're in very close communication on a regular basis with schools. Our biggest concern, because the vast majority of people who will come down with this virus will have a mild, let's put it that way, a mild version of a disease. They will not require hospitalization. It's just like, you know, a bad upper respiratory infection or bronchitis. They would recover well with chicken soup, tender-loving care, as I always say, at home, and some Tylenol for fever. But about 80% can get, you know, sometimes severely ill. And those are usually elderly people or people with chronic medical conditions, underlying medical conditions like polycontrol diabetes or, you know, heart failure, renal disease, chronic lung disease, and so forth. Elderly folks unfortunately have a little bit of a weaker immune system than younger people, and therefore are at higher risk to develop a severe pneumonia that may require even intensive care at the hospital. So what we would like to stress is that those folks should really be extra careful how to protect themselves, not just with frequent hand washing and, you know, hygiene, cover your cough. We all have heard this like a zillion times now, but it is really the best measure to protect yourself. Wash your hands frequently, have good hygiene measures, don't touch your nose, eyes, or mouth if you can. It's pretty hard, I found out this morning. Don't shake hands any longer. I think it's reasonable to just do this nice old-fashioned fist bump or elbow bump or something like that. And just stay away from sick people, stay away from crowded places, clean surfaces frequently at home, at work, and so forth. If you are one of these people with a weaker immune system, try and find out if you can work from home. You know, there is a lot of virtual electronic ability these days. Cottage Hospital even is rolling out a virtual doctor visit, which is really fantastic. It's open to everybody, not just to Cottage patients. And so we can avoid further spread or rapid spread of the virus. If the virus were to come to Santa Barbara and spread rapidly in the community, I might be forced to, you know, ask for or demand, more likely, cancellation of public events. You know, at the moment, those are all recommendations, you know, and we hope that the community is alert enough to follow these guidelines because it is going to be very protective, not for the individuals alone, but also for the community at large. There was a lot of sentiment in the community about the cruise ships for obvious reasons because there were like two or three cruise ships that have significant outbreaks on them, and that is very concerning. We are in very close communication with the state on these issues because we are not the only port city, but in, in the state of California, you know, and, but I was informed by our waterfront, new waterfront director, that the cruise ship that was slanted for March 24th has canceled on their own. So we have a little bit of breathing room, and I understand that City Council of Santa Barbara, in conjunction, or followed by Board of Supervisors of the county, have already sent letters to the cruise lines requesting to hold off on any disembarkment for now. That is the status quo. So I think the, our community members should, could feel reassured about that. For sure, that is not an easy decision to make for the city because it has a huge financial loss for many businesses, and I understand that. But sometimes, public health supersedes those concerns, unfortunately. Yeah, anything else? Just see. As I said, we are working very closely with our community partners in healthcare, the large and small clinics, Cottage Hospital in particular, and from our publics, from our health department from the county, we are rolling out a brand-new website. It is going to be online tomorrow, which is going to be updated daily several times a day, and with current information, numbers, recommendations for restaurants, for public event planners, for schools, for individuals, and so forth. And we really hope that this will be a good information addition to, to the public. I would like to invite Dr. Fisk now to talk on his perspective from Cottage Health.
Thanks, Dr. Fisk. So, there's no questions on that one section? I, if I, if I could ask a question, sir?
Of course.
So, you said that San Luis Obispo County is recommending social distancing?
Correct.
Even though they don't have a case, confirmed case yet? So that, that's sort of one of the first steps, and then if, if we do declare an emergency, or if you do, right, it has to be county public health, then the different categories would be forbidding large social gatherings, or is it recommending against large social gatherings? How does that work?
Well, I think we have to sort of make a decision on every individual case.
Okay.
For instance, if, if you are able with a gathering to stay at arm's length, so to speak, or an outdoor venue with very good sanitary situation, everything, that might be still an option. Maybe more virtual meetings can be scheduled for, but anything that is very close contact for people should be probably canceled. And, but we are not at this stage at this point, and those are just measures that are part of the armamentarium in trying to mitigate further spread of the virus. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. So, we're asking questions on what Dr. Ansorg just presented, or?
We have another presenter.
And another presenter?
Mm-hmm.
Do we want to go to the, well, he might, Dr. Fisk, might give us information that we have questions. So let's, so let's go ahead and, and hold up on questions. I will too. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. Pleased to be here this afternoon to discuss this timely issue with you all, and I will limit my comments to focusing on what's happening at Cottage Health in this regard. And I would start by saying that Cottage has been preparing furiously for this for well over probably a month and a half now, right from when the time when we knew that this was going to be spreading widely. And so Cottage has convened multidisciplinary morning meetings of probably 25, 30 individuals throughout the organization, representing just about every arm of the organization to plan for this. And planning at a hospital and health system level involves not only thinking about a patient who might walk in through the ER, but it even involves small details such as thinking about eventually where your next heart valve implant device is going to come from because of disruptions in the supply chain from China. So, our morning meetings have involved senior administration, leaders of the medical staff, and the emergency department leadership as well, with Dr. Wilson, who's here today. It's involved security, it's involved our laboratory, Pacific Diagnostic Labs, the main regional lab, and their expertise in deploying testing for this. It's involved nursing leadership, facilities management, those who, you know, help clean the rooms at Cottage, you know. So truly a widespread effort throughout the organization, and we meet over an hour a day to prepare for this every day of the week, five days, Monday through Friday. Our, one of our main emphases at Cottage has been to not only be prepared to take care of patients who might come down with COVID, but also to do what we can to protect our staff at Cottage so we can continue to provide services and minimize exposures to patients who have COVID. Because at the moment, although this may be changing imminently, at the moment, if a healthcare worker is exposed to someone with COVID, they need to take 14 days off work. And when you're dealing with highly skilled and highly-trained staff and people with a lot of experience, it doesn't take long until you are compromised as a healthcare organization, if you've got large numbers of people on furlough. So, to that end, we have deployed efforts to reach outside the walls of Cottage to the media to try to get the word out that if someone thinks they're going to need services at Cottage, i.e. through the ER, that they call first if they think they might have symptoms of COVID. So they can actually be met outside of the hospital and by staff who are prepared to take care of them, staff in protective gear so a potential patient can be masked and brought into our specialized negative pressure rooms to minimize transmission within the hospitals, in accordance with guidance we're receiving from CDC and CDPH on that. Similarly, we have signage posted at our public entrances so that the public knows that they should not be visiting Cottage if they have symptoms of a respiratory infection so we can start to minimize transmission on that front as well. And our marketing team has been working with the media and others to get that word out to the public. And those are all part of our efforts to protect our staff. A few other highlights of it, we have really been focusing on the equipment we need to provide care for COVID patients. In particular, N95 masks, which we in Santa Barbara are all too familiar with, as Dr. Ansorg mentioned earlier from, in this morning, from fires. These masks are the standard mask that healthcare workers wear at the moment when they are taking care of a suspect patient with COVID or a confirmed patient with COVID-19. And these are international shortage. Cottage fortunately is well-stocked in N95 masks, but we continue to monitor that supply very carefully and also to implement processes and procedures to limit our usage of the masks. Because during a time like this, sometimes the masks vanish for people's personal consumption, and we need those to do our work at the hospital. So the hospital is being very proactive in actually limiting access to N95 masks to the healthcare workers who are going to be directly involved in caring for these patients. We're also monitoring supply lines for gowns and gloves and goggles and face shields that we need to care for Cottage patients, and have been able to successfully, I think, secure alternate sources when some of the primary supply chains have been disrupted due to trade issues or production problems, in many cases from China, as they had grappled with this epidemic. Cottage has also put into place widespread education campaigns of our staff, ranging from the basics of what COVID is, all the way to, you know, how, what you need to do to protect yourself, and actually giving us refresher courses on putting on and wearing appropriate protective equipment as we provide. appropriate protective equipment as we provide our care for the patients. And that's been done both in person, and with online videos have been posted, and emails, and many avenues of education that we are pursuing. The Cottage is starting and working on developing contingency staffing plans, if indeed our staff was compromised and not able to care for patients because we were sick. And so that's also something that we've been proactively pursuing, and also working diligently to communicate with our partners in providing healthcare throughout the region. And as Dr. Ansorg mentioned, he and I almost have a hotline back and forth with each other right now, and that's a very productive dialogue, so that we can try to adjust patients who might have symptoms of COVID that have come to our attention, or patients who have risk factors, but also to develop widespread programs and roll out systems that will help our community at large in preparing and managing this, when it does come. And I fully believe we will be having confirmed cases in Santa Barbara, and we'll be having people sick enough that they require inpatient care for this in Santa Barbara as well. Another thing that Cottage we're doing is not only being reactionary to what's coming, but we're working to anticipate what might be coming, because the nature of this outbreak is changing so quickly, as Paige said, hour by hour, day by day, and that we need to be flexible in our approaches. And what might be guidance from CDC one day can change the next day, and sometimes we see things locally on the ground here, where we feel we might need to take an approach slightly different from what's recommended from CDC, because it takes time for them to implement things on a national level. So with that, I would just also add the virtual health platform that Dr. Ansorg mentioned is something that Cottage is expanding, where part of the guidance from CDC now is, if you don't have to go to your doctor and might be able to communicate over the phone if you have a COVID symptom, think about reaching out to your doctor that way. And Cottage has this service available now, and so people can reach healthcare providers if they have concerns about about COVID symptoms, yet that doesn't require a face-to-face visit that then would potentially expose a healthcare provider's office to the virus. And that's all I have, so thank you.
Okay, so before we end, I just want to share, we're really excited about our new public information portal that's supposed to go live this evening. It's supposed to be very user-friendly, it's much more robust, it's going to have a lot more real-time information, so we encourage you to visit our website if you want to receive just daily updates. It's it should be live this evening, so for more information, visit us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take questions from the council, and then we'll do public comment. I'm assuming we have some speaker slips. Ms. Harmon, you go ahead first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you all so much. This I learned so much from this presentation, I really, really appreciate it. So my questions fall into a couple of different buckets, so I'll just start first with the virus itself. And I should preface my questions by saying I'm asking these of you, because a lot of people have come to me asking these questions, so I'm hoping you can shed a little bit of light. COVID-19, can you talk to us about, but I've heard from a lot of people, it's just like the flu. Is that true? What makes it different? And I think there's some confusion about what it is, and and that is increasing the level of anxiety. So can you describe, and you did it in your presentation, but tell us a little bit more about the symptoms and what makes this different from a very bad flu season?
I would respond to that, and thank you for that that question, because that is a very important, practical thing for for those of us to to consider as we're thinking about our own health and the health of our loved ones. And the, you know, the COVID-19 virus is a virus that infects our respiratory system, and it can infect us from the upper part of our respiratory symptoms, such as the back of our throat, all the way down into our lungs. And and so, as Dr. Ansorg mentioned, most people who get infected with COVID-19 will have symptoms of upper respiratory infection, what we all think of, sore throat, cough, potentially congestion, feeling lousy, malez, but we're not seriously ill. We don't need oxygen to breathe, we don't have pain in that situation when we breathe, and our breathing rate is not dramatically elevated. COVID can, in the cases we're seeing that have severe outcomes, move to the lower respiratory tract, and there it causes symptoms of pneumonia, which is pain with breathing, inability to catch one's breath, can't get enough oxygen in, and eventually, if it gets really bad, inability of the lungs to function and do their critical work. So that's, you know, the big picture of sort of how it behaves. And the distinction for those of us in the healthcare realm is, when has it moved into the lower respiratory symptoms, system, where pneumonia is and compromised lung function are present, and when somebody may need additional levels of care in the inpatient side and to be admitted to hospital for that? Now influenza can do the same thing. However, influenza, many of us have partial immunity to influenza from previous exposures to currently circulating influenza viruses or similar influenza viruses that have circulated in the past. We don't have immunity to COVID-19, so people are more susceptible to it on average than they are influenza. However, influenza, in terms of symptoms, is more likely to show up with having fevers than COVID is. We at first thought most people with COVID-19 had fevers, we now know it's in the range of probably 45% from some of the studies coming out of China. And but certainly influenza, another hallmark of that is very, very sudden onset of symptoms. You can go from feeling fine to feeling like you're hit by a truck and having shaking so badly you can't hold a cup of water within five minutes. And and influenza, for those of us, any of us ever had it, is a very dramatic onset of illness. COVID may not be that way. It can be rapid, but it also can be slower over a period of days, and it's worsening of symptoms. So there is a lot of overlap, but there are some subtle differences in terms of how the virus symptoms show up. And, you know, but that's, to me, in as an infectious disease physician, infectious disease physicians worry about influenza more than anything, as as its potential to be a devastating disease globally. And and we've learned the respect influenza from the previous epidemics and pandemics that happened, and from the sheer fact that it's still, you know, killing about 20,000 to 30,000, sometimes 50,000 people in a year in the United States on an average year. And and so whereas COVID, so far, you know, almost all the cases that have led to death in the United States have been associated with one nursing home in Seattle or in Kirkland, you know, influenza, as they say, it's killing a jumbo jet full of people every day in this country. And so, and yet we don't worry about influenza. So that gives some perspective on the situation, I think.
Thank you.
Can I, there's just one thing I think is crucial also for the for the citizens to understand, is that bad outcomes in COVID are really limited to elderly folks and people with compromised immune systems or chronic diseases. It's very rare in children, and if they have something, it's very, very mild, just the sniffles or something. That's our understanding so far. Whereas influenza can kill children, can kill healthy, younger adults in great numbers. So there is another difference to the influenza outbreak, not to minimize the risk of COVID, but just as Dr. Fisk alluded to, to put it in perspective, we tend to forget about the influenza risk.
Thank you. That gets, my next question was about vulnerable populations specifically. So children, you said, are not particularly susceptible to this. I haven't heard anyone speak about the impacts on pregnant women, pregnant people. Can you please address whether that is of particular concern?
Sure. I I think the answer is, it's too early to really know its impact on pregnancy. We have, we would have reasons to suspect that pregnant women may not do as well if they get infected with COVID as a woman who's not pregnant, and that's based on experience with other viruses like influenza, where influenza kills pregnant women at five times the rate of non-pregnant women. But it's still very early to know, and there are paradoxically some conditions that when women who are pregnant get sick with them, they actually don't do as bad as other people. So I think it's too early to tell, but we do have concern about potentially women who are pregnant and this virus. The, you know, the thing that we are seeing, though, is people in institutionalized settings, such as these nursing homes, are particularly vulnerable, not only because of age and its impact on immunity, but because of the close quarters that people are in, and just like we saw in the Diamond Princess cruise ship, the this virus can spread rapidly in a close confines.
Thank you. Just a couple more questions. Thank you.
Take your time.
I'd like to move on to testing. And as someone myself who is not necessarily in one of those vulnerable populations, if I come down with what could be a common cold, how is someone like me supposed to determine whether and when to seek testing specifically for this virus? And and really, what do we want, what would you like us to tell our neighbors when they say, oh, I have a scratchy throat, and is this COVID-19? Should I get tested? Where's that line? And how do we draw it?
Well, let me answer in a roundabout way. If we suspect somebody has influenza, we want them to be tested as quickly as possible, because we have medications that only work if you take it as soon as possible. With this virus, it's a little different. This virus can start very mildly, and you just have something like a bad cold maybe, and then over time, sometimes over a week or two, it can develop into a serious lung issue. So if somebody who is generally relatively healthy and feels a little unwell, like I'm coming down with a cold like flu like something, I don't think it's reasonable to immediately get alarmed and race to the doctor to get a test. Our testing capability is still a little bit limited, even though it is really ramping ramping up dramatically compared to last week. We not only have public health labs run the tests, which is a little cumbersome, because they have to be approved by me to be run at the public health lab, but as of today, LabCorp and Quest are running those tests that can be ordered by any provider without any approval, need for approval by public health. So that is a big advantage. We are hoping that the providers use the testing capabilities judiciously in the beginning, until we have really a lot of test kits available, that, you know, even minor cases could be considered for testing. At this point, we encourage our doctors and and providers to utilize the test judiciously. And one of the reasons is that it doesn't mean that the sooner you test, the better your result is going to be, you know, for if you're generally a healthy person, you should just stay home, take care of yourself in the usual manner, and not go to work, of course, and not make other people sick. But there is no medication out there that would shorten the course until now, but, you know, things move fast, and maybe in a couple of weeks, we do have a medication.
And I would add, from the Cottage perspective on that, that if you have mild symptoms of compatible with an upper respiratory infection, and you come to the Cottage ER requesting testing, you're not going to get it. And so we feel very strongly that testing is appropriate for those who are going to require hospital admission, because it will inform other aspects of their care when they are there, but it also is done to, you know, help identify potential patients who could spread it within the hospital. If we did not test them, we wouldn't know that and put our staff at risk. But we also feel that it's important to protect the capacity of the Cottage Emergency Department to care for people with other disorders, and if suddenly there's 1,000 people coming to Cottage ER saying, I want to test because I have a sore throat, that's going to impact the ability to provide care to our community for other illnesses.
Thank you. That's extremely helpful. And can you briefly describe, just so folks know, what type of test is, is it a swab, a blood test? What is what is it?
Yeah, the testing involves swabs of the far back of the nose and the far back part of the mouth, and if someone is making a has a cough that produces sputum, that is also sent off for testing.
Okay, thank you. My next question, you talked about the outreach that you're all doing, which sounds so wonderful. Have you translated that information into Spanish for our Spanish-speaking neighbors? How are you communicating with those folks?
Yes, our website, everything we are producing, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, everything we are producing from the Public Health Department is translated in Spanish, and that goes all the way from our press releases to our educational materials.
And my final question, I think, is for Mr. Casey. I'm hoping that you can describe for the public quickly the the city's contingency plan. I know you all spoke about particularly at Cottage, how they're dealing with staffing issues that may arise. Can you tell us a little bit about the city's plan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Very similar to Cottage and other major employers in town, and probably most employers in town, needing to plan for a scenario in which we have a number of vacancies, and having the backup and plans in place to maintain critical services. We provide a lot of critical services, from running a water and wastewater treatment plant, to having fire personnel and public safety personnel and others. So each department is kind of its own unique operating circumstance, and so they're putting those plans together and having them in place. While at the same time, we're encouraging people, if they're sick, to stay home. We have a lot of dedicated staff who want to come to work anyways, but we're following the guidance that if you're sick, stay home, so we don't get more employees sick. But we are putting those plans in place and are confident that we'll be ready.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Friedman, and then Ms. Nedden after you.
Thank you, I have a few questions. The first is kind of staying on what to do if someone gets sick, and for full disclosure, my spouse works at Greta Valley Hospital, and so we talk about it there. So if, for some reason, either at Greta Valley or anywhere in the community, the recommendation is to go home for 14 days, and you live in a household where there's children and a spouse, what do the children and the spouse, are they, should they self-quarantine as well? Because it's not like you can separate the sick employee from the family.
Well, we have to deal, in public health, we have to deal with similar situations frequently, in tuberculosis care, for instance, where, you know, one person in the household has to isolate. There are ways to do that, even in a household, believe it or not. It's really interesting, but our disease control team is very good at assessing those situations, and I think the recommendation cannot be one size fits all, but probably has to, you know, it depends on 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 your apartment or house, how many bathrooms are in there, you know, are there shared spaces, or can one person maybe be, a sick person may maybe be more isolated in a bedroom with an attached bathroom, if the luxury is there, and scenarios like that. Paige, do you have any other input on that?
No, I think, I think in the event, oh, I'm so sorry. In the event of a COVID case that we had at home, and we would, if we had to consider those household members as exposed, we may want to consider putting them on also on a 14-day quarantine. So it just depends on the context, so, and and the other environmental factors that Dr. Ansorg just mentioned.
Thank you, that's important. I want to stress that to the public, is each case would be evaluated as they come in, and so that we can make informed decisions on that. It kind of along those those lines as well is, I also work in a grocery store, and as the media and others have noticed, there's been a lot of, a lot of buying and a lot of crowding in our grocery stores. And so any just best practices, because there's a lot of concern about places, say, that a health order comes out to limit going to crowded locations. But yet grocery stores are crowded locations. How should the community deal with basic essential services, such as shopping for groceries or things of that nature, should a health order come out?
That's a good question. I usually recommend to go to the grocery store at 7:00 AM. But I don't know yet. The honest answer is, I don't know yet myself, but fortunately, I have a very dedicated and smart team behind me, run by Paige Batsen, with 20 years of experience with all sorts of disasters, and, you know, we probably can rely on fire and emergency personnel and first responders, if that were, you know, a scenario that you're talking about, where nobody is allowed to go to the grocery store, that we provide, you know, to our community members.
Thank you. My point was more of they're crowded spaces, so just My point was more of they're crowded spaces, so just take the normal precautions that were, you're recommending now.
Definitely. Normal precautions, wipe down the grocery cart handle, of course, and, you know, try and find times when the store's not as crowded. So the 7:00 AM was not just a joke, even though it is a little bit of a joke, but there are times, there are rush hours at grocery stores, you know? And try and stay, have as much room around you as possible. We're always saying arm's length, so six feet away from a different person. Try not to stand in a line for a very long time. And that's, make sure you wash your hands frequently. After you've been to the grocery store, make sure you wash your hands.
And earlier, it was mentioned that on March, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency. Can, we better define what that is? There's certain legal things more towards funding, but what does that mean as a state of emergency? Because what I want to clarify is it doesn't mean shelter in place or those types of things, but can you, to help us understand what specifically a state of emergency is in this case means?
Basically, it means a lot. It means it can offer us certain immunities within the state. It also can bring in more resources. And more, it's more along the lines of resources and being able to, the immunity piece is probably the biggest thing, that at least when, when they declare that. It also helps us when we declare something locally to be able to draw upon resources as far as prevention and so forth. So it's not necessarily that there's more dollars available or that more, anything happens, but it's just, it's more of a process.
Okay, so it's more related to the available resources that we have at our disposal to both react and plan for this, and it's not declaring that the number of cases has reached a certain threshold?
No.
Thank you. And I also have, before I get to cruise ships, a question about our homeless population. How are we working to, to provide services and make sure that our homeless populations are being tested if they should be, or what happens if they need, if there is a positive, or trying to make sure that they're in situations where they can have prevention as well?
Yeah, that is obviously a very challenging topic, how to protect the, you know, homeless population in a time like this. This is a priority that we are working on internally in the county and with our partners in the city and county. We are, you know, evaluating, setting up hand washing stations. Obviously, somebody has to pay for that. They need to be maintained, secured, you know, protected from vandalism and all sorts of things. They have to be in really strategic places and, and as well as the shelters need to have, and they do have a very strong and robust plan in place. What, I mean, they have very strict guidelines what to do with, you know, somebody, for instance, who has tuberculosis, which is sort of a respiratory infection that is very contagious. We oftentimes put up patients who are, have come down with tuberculosis in a motel with a good ventilation system, where one room has, essentially isolates them totally with their ventilation, so other motel members, guests cannot get sick. And we are looking in, into very various scenarios in how we can address the homeless care under these circumstances.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman, I'm going to take the liberty of calling up Jeff Schaefer with SB Act, Santa Barbara Alliance for Community Transformation. They're our nonprofit partners in dealing with people who are residentially challenged. And Mr. Schaefer, if, folks, is it okay if it's your presentation, Mr. Schaefer is working on this issue with us internally?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I don't have a white coat, so thank, I'm not the medical expert, but our role is really to try to coordinate all of our homeless service providers, as well as those individuals and families experiencing homelessness as well, to coordinate a plan. So we've already been, we've already been on the phone with all of our shelter providers as they discuss to talk about what their, what their plan is in place. We have our steering committee on next Wednesday, where we're going to take a certain, with 18 different partners, we're going to take a percentage of that time to put toward a discussion about all the plans of the homeless service providers. Yoli has already been in contact with us from the city as far as emergency management, so she's given us some training. Today, there were several phone calls with the COC and also the city that different providers have been on to get educated themselves. We have a lived experience working group this week, Thursday at 1:00 at Christ Presbyterian, where we're going to begin to gather together some of the individuals experiencing homelessness, have a discussion with them about how to help them and how to communicate with the population that's experiencing homelessness as well. Our ultimate goal is to, as the homeless, as the street population, due to comorbidity and other health issues, is more vulnerable, to support them. So also the Alameda Park meal sharing, which we oversee and coordinate. We have a meeting Thursday night with all the meal providers to discuss what we're going to put in place. We've reached out to the county to get their policies and Parks and Rec and public health to put some stuff in place, because those meals, both Pershing, Alameda, so there's a Sunday, Wednesday, and a Thursday, most of those meals are not just food, but they're also connected to Doctors Without Walls, connected to organizations such as Home for Good, AmeriCorps, Stainet, that try to get people into housing. So those meals are still very important to keep going if we can, depending on social, so we're doing the training on social distancing and all that, but we don't want to also pull away. And also to protect volunteers, there's a lot of volunteers that are working at these meal sharings, a little bit older as well. So all that's very important. I think what's important for us is to have the correct connections with the county and the city so that things are put in play, that we make sure we're communicating to all of our partners the right message at the right time in a timely fashion. And I feel like through our steering committee, those are all things that we can do as well. So those are, every, everyone's kind of at a different place, but I know the Transition House, we've been in contact with Salvation Army, PATH, and, who am I forgetting, Rescue Mission. They're all putting things in play right now due to various trainings they're having.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
Thanks, Mr. Schaefer. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Casey, maybe this question is, I have questions regarding cruise ships and then also the airport. Is now the time to, to ask those questions with staff?
Or Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
If, I'll start with cruise ships because that has been a very engaged topic with the public. And Mr. Wiltshire, if you could give us an update on the cruise ships, the, the future scheduled visits, and then what steps we're taking at the city and other, other measures, and also in terms of putting a temporary halt to them until, until the CDC changes their travel guidelines on them. Who has oversight over this? What's the city's role in this? If you could just give us an overview of cruise ships?
Yeah, absolutely. Madam Mayor, council members, Mike Wiltshire, waterfront director. I'll give a little background on cruise ships. So the, our next previously scheduled visit was March 24th, which was the Grand Princess, which has self-canceled. As of last night, the mayor and the county has issued a letter requesting that our remaining cruises not disembark in Santa Barbara until the CDC recommendation to not travel by cruise is lifted. There was a remaining 10 cruises between now and June 17th. So the, the thought on the city side is really to pin, tie this to the CDC, and they're, they're really the experts on the disease, and we're, we're not necessarily the health experts. So pinning, relying on them and Santa Barbara County Public Health to make some of these decisions based on cruise ships will kind of dictate where we go. A good thing is, we have some time. So as of now, we have, we haven't heard back from the cruise industry on our request, but if they abide by that request, then we are cleared through summer. And we typically have cruises in spring and fall, so June 17th would be our last one for this season.
And there's been some talk about why the request, rather than just stating, do this, and can you talk to the jurisdictional issues of this? So do you understand what authority we have and, and other agencies that might have authority over cruise ships coming to our area?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council members, without getting too far out of my, my lane, I don't want to speak legally too much about it, but I'll defer to our city attorney on that.
Mr. Kalan, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wiltshire. Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Friedman. On February 2nd, the Coast Guard issued a marine safety information bulletin. That bulletin notified ship commanders that symptoms related to COVID-19 were hazardous conditions under federal maritime law, and that the, the ship commanders had to report in with the relevant authority for Santa Barbara, who happens to be the district commander of the 11th District or the captain of the port of Los Angeles and Long Beach. We have a marine safety detachment here, and our port is regulated by the captain of the port of Los Angeles and Long Beach. So anyway, that bulletin's still in effect and will prevent ships from both entering navigable waters or mooring or anchoring here without communicating with the Coast Guard. And it sets up this marine safety information bulletin, sets up a detailed protocol to make sure that exposures within the last 14 days are, are covered. Having said that, I've also advised Mr. Wiltshire that either coming ashore or disembarkation, whatever you want to call it, in Santa Barbara can be regulated by the city, provided we have a public health emergency and provided that that regulation is consistent with orders from the captain of the port for the Coast Guard.
So we will be monitoring with our public health experts, as well as the Coast Guard, for the future going forward on, on these, on terms of our options for limiting them?
Yes.
And then maybe Mr. Kalan, and this would be, Mr. Thompson. For airports, there has been some, we've been communicated on the airport itself, and what is the risk of the airport? And can you speak to the airport, please?
Yes, sir. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman. To date, the airport is experiencing business as usual. We have not seen a drop in passengers or service provided at the airport. However, we do expect that as this pandemic evolves, we're going to see some type of an impact, like likely a reduction of passengers, a reduction of scheduled service into the airport. We're thinking possibly in the month of April is when we'll begin to see the impact, and that's based upon information that we're receiving from airline bookings at the point, at this point in time. We are monitoring, you know, what's happening. We're taking our information and, and guidance from the experts, and that's at the federal level. So we take direction from the FAA, DHS, CDC, they're monitoring air travel, and there is currently no domestic travel ban in the U.S. And I think that's important for everyone to understand. The travel bans are only affecting international ports of entry, of which Santa Barbara is not, and for travel to destinations like China and Italy at this point. So there's, the experts are saying that the risk of, of, you know, contracting this on an airplane is relatively low. And so you have to listen to what the experts are recommending and look at your own personal circumstances and determine whether or not you should travel or not. But we do not currently have any restrictions for Santa Barbara.
Thank you.
That was Henry Thompson, our airport director. Thank you. Mike Wiltshire, harbor director, stand by, there might be more questions. And folks, I hope you don't mind if, if those questions come out of our staff, and maybe you're learning something, and we're all in this together. So thanks. You're done then, Mr. Friedman? Ms., Ms. Nedden, go ahead. Oh, Ms. Batson?
Oh, yes. I just want to clarify what the state of emergency proclamation means, okay? I'm going to go ahead and read this. Aside from allowing more resources, it, it says that the emergency proclamation includes provisions that protect consumers against price gouging. That was a big one, and I couldn't think of it right offhand. And it also allows for healthcare workers to come from out of state to assist at healthcare facilities and give healthcare facilities various flexibilities that they may need. So those, so there's, there's more to it that, but that's, those are some of the key changes that would happen with the proclamation.
Thank you for those clarifications. I think those are all helpful for us in understanding the response and the, the elevated response we're not eligible for because of that. Thank you.
Yeah, they just don't want to charge $50 for hand gel.
And, Madam Mayor, I
Go ahead.
Got to piggyback on what Ms. Batson said, that one of the interesting things in that proclamation is that the governor has essentially commandeered the fairgrounds, including Earl Warren, as space available should it be needed.
Great. We're getting a lot of information. Ms. Nedden, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Many of my questions have been answered. Thank you. And I so appreciate you being here to answer all of our questions. Some of these are random and come from people who've asked them of me, and I think it's better to have the experts answer them. And the, the first one is, do we know how it's actually transmitted? I've, I've heard recent things about fecal shedding, or touching surfaces, or airborne, or stay six feet away, or further than that. Is, is there information on how it's actually transmitted? And can it be transmitted through animals or just person to person? How long does it live on a surface? That kind of thing.
The primary mode of transmission of this virus is through respiratory droplets. And so those are droplets that we extrude from our respiratory tract when we cough or sneeze, and they have the potential to travel short distances, meaning a few feet from the body. Okay? It's different from something like chickenpox, that is a much smaller particle and can travel or stay suspended in the air for a prolonged period of time, that we then just breathe in. But this is something that is felt to be transmitted by droplets, so being, that's where the close contact becomes a factor. So if you're six feet away from someone, your chance of acquiring this through a droplet that's, comes out of someone else is much lower than if you're two feet away. These droplets can live on surfaces, so there is the potential for transfer to someone if you touch a surface and then touch your mouth or your nose or your eye. And so there is certainly some potential for that, but the primary mode of transfer is felt to be through direct droplet transmission. It is not, there is not, you know, realizing that we are still early, and this is a virus we just found out about in December, and we're learning more about it. We do not have particular concern about transmission through our waste, and so the CDC has issued no special guidance for handling of human waste in the healthcare settings. And, and also, we don't believe that pets are major vectors for this, although they might actually transiently in a short term have the virus, like in their respiratory tract. We don't believe so far, based on what we know, that they then incubate it and become factories for spreading it to other pets or other people.
And how long is the resident time on a surface? So a droplet hits a surface, how long is that virus?
Yeah, it's a period of several hours. I think that's still somewhat up, up in debate. You know, we, when a situation like this comes out, from our experience with other viral infections, we might hear an initial statistic, and then later on, we hear a statistic that's several days different from the initial value. So I think it's fair to say it's a matter of several hours, but how long, I don't think we really know.
Thank you. And then along those lines, with disinfectants, and people are, we're out in stores, and I hear now you can't get it on Amazon, hand sanitizer, and what, how important is a particular type of hand sanitizer, or soap and water, or people talk about making their own with various ingredients?
Vodka.
And vodka and aloe, I hear, but then the vodka is not high enough alcohol content. And, I mean, we're getting to a place where you go to the store, it isn't there, and people are coming up with very creative ideas, and do you have anything to offer on that?
I, I think, I would defer to Dr. Anzor's expertise on that.
So soap and water is still the best cleaning method, always, if, if available, it's always better than a hand sanitizer. If you can have, there's no usage, there's no water and soap available. If you can have, there's no usage, there's no water and soap available, a hand sanitizer is the second option, and it needs to have 60% or more alcohol. And that's why vodka doesn't work, doesn't have 60%, only has 40% of alcohol, and therefore it's not sufficient.
It's a legitimate question, yeah. I mean, there has been a lot of discussion about that.
With regard to cleaning, diluted Clorox is perfectly appropriate for cleaning surfaces in the house or even, you know. So there are EPA-regulated cleaners that are used in healthcare settings and so forth, but for regular households, just dilution of bleach essentially is perfectly appropriate to kill the virus.
Thank you. And then along those lines, people are stockpiling water. Can you speak to the safety of our water sources?
To my knowledge, there is no risk to the water sources because there is no fecal oral transmission.
Thank you. And then, oh, there's my question there, vodka and aloe, but you answered that. Spring break is coming up. Any advice for either people here traveling or the people who may be traveling to come here? Any special precautions for spring break?
I think our creativity is really, you know, in demand with creating a different kind of spring break experience this year because we've, I mean, the counties in California have different rates of disease currently. Santa Clara County was the first one that actually issued, you know, like a social distancing order, strong recommendation. Other counties have followed up on that. And so air travel is always an issue, however. Yeah, I think it also depends on who is traveling. So again, if somebody is elderly or has underlying medical conditions or has a weakened immune system for various reasons, they should really be cautious and make, maybe postpone the travel plans or make different plans. And I hope that our social media frenzy population will post a lot of good ideas, and I'm very eager to learn more myself, but I think our creativity is put to the test here.
So staycation?
Yes.
Okay. And then the question was answered about our Spanish-speaking community. Any particular advice on food handling? Buying food at the market, any particular special care?
I think a much bigger risk from food handling is E. coli infection or salmonella. In reality, I think that's what we see from our food supply, and that is a major public health issue that gets very little attention, but leads to large numbers of deaths and hospitalizations and millions of illnesses annually. So I think the same rules apply with our food handling for this as applies on a general, any given day of the year. If you're handling meats, you know, in particular, you need to not only wash your hands after, before and after, but you need to wash down the surface that contacted it when you were preparing it before it was cooked. You need to cook foods thoroughly and wash your vegetables, even if they're triple washed, pre-washed at the grocery store ready, you need to wash them on your own, again.
Thank you. I just have a couple more questions. So you said the growth rate might be different in different cities. Do you know what the current, is it like 1.5 or around, or do we know the current growth rate? I realize it changes daily, hourly, but...
Well, we believe it's similar to influenza. So on average, one sick person will make two and a half other people sick. That's, but we learned so much about this virus. This could change once we find out that there are a lot of actually people carrying the virus who have very mild disease and they don't seek healthcare necessarily and don't get tested. Once those numbers get included, our, you know, our percentages will be very different. We are always really smart in hindsight.
And then with children, they may not exhibit extreme signs of the disease, but they may be incubators or carriers?
Potentially.
Yeah.
We don't have really solid signs behind that, but that is definitely a possible scenario that we need to be aware of.
And then just one more. I was really happy to hear you say that we need to be nimble and that we're responding to this locally in a way that might not be the same as a different city or a different area, and I just really want to express appreciation for that. And so I am wondering too, though, how will the community be informed when things change? And who makes that call? I hear what you're saying about some of the calls made, but who is the team that's deciding when a major change will happen and how will the public be informed?
Well, we have a public information officer with the whole team, our, from the county health department. They are probably the main distributor of messaging to officials, to other agencies, to our partners in healthcare and emergency responders and so forth. And it is pushed out through press releases, through provider alerts that go to all doctors in the area, through social media, and as of tomorrow morning, also our updated website with really updated current information and guidance. And then we have phone calls, and once we would declare an emergency, we will have what we call the JIG, a very, you know, highly-staffed phone operation for people to call in as well and get advice.
Excellent. Thank you. It's so helpful to have one source of information in place to go as we get all these different questions and misinformation, and it's very helpful to be able to tell people where to go. Thank you.
Councilmember Alejandra Gutierrez.
Thank you again for coming in. I have a couple questions, so please bear with me, and some of my questions also come from the community. And some of my questions are also the, if it hits Santa Barbara, what is our emergency plan type of questions? For, I represent a district that is a bilingual district, but from what I experienced and my neighbors experienced with the mudslides, a lot of them live in homes with a lot of family members, and I know that the information is online and it's in Spanish. But what type of outreach, like community outreach, are we doing to give the information we're learning now? Because these are also the individuals that might not be insured, hesitate to even go to the doctor during the year. They have to work because their daily work depends on paying the rent at the end of the month. So I note that the fire department does a great job with Liliana. I know she's very known in the community, so I want to acknowledge that. Thank you for your work. But overall, what is the county and the city doing?
So one of the things we've been doing, as with other kinds of diseases and TB and whatever, influenza, one of the things we're trying to do right now is reach out to the Spanish radio, finding other methods of communicating. We just did a couple of Spanish radio and where there was, the different radio stations have really allowed us to reach a community that wouldn't typically go online or are not able to access information during regular business hours, if you will. So that's one of our methods of trying to reach that population.
And Madam Mayor, while Ms. Encinas walks up, I want to, city council during the last budget cycle identified this as an area of need of improvement for the city and funded a position that we embedded into the fire department office of emergency services to provide that bilingual outreach that then does become a citywide resource at times like this. And so then we hired Ms. Encinas, who agrees, fantastic, and she can kind of share with you more about what she's doing.
Thanks.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez, for that shout out. I try to include all of our community with our emergency messaging. And so we do have ongoing collaboration with the county office of emergency management, and we make sure that whatever information goes out to the public goes out in a timely manner in Spanish as well. We do have, citywide, we have a whole community committee, which consists of local nonprofits, small businesses, places of worship. And so we don't summon them, and I quote unquote, summon them with frequency unless it's an important subject to touch. And so we will be doing that in the next week. We will be summoning these nonprofits, and it's a large consistency. It consists of Latino elders outreach network, several networks that get together. And then we are trying to update our information either through social media or on our website. And we do have an information line where people can call in, and it's a number that they call, and we have a message specific to, right now it's COVID-19, whatever the emergency is, it's in English and in Spanish. So those are some of the things that we are doing citywide.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm just wondering, is it possible to leave, to provide information about our website? Because as I mentioned, our information is also available in Spanish, and we have an outgoing message line. And so later on, depending as things progress, we will possibly set up like a hotline or maybe even a call center so individuals can call and ask questions as well. And those will be staffed by bilingual staff as well.
And we do have a great relationship with our radio, our Spanish-language radio, and actually, we have a live interview tonight. And so they do give us on-air time, and we always refer to our county public health, and we do refer them to the Center for Disease Control or for the state public health department because all three platforms do have Spanish-language information. So, thank you.
Thanks.
So my second question. I'm hearing, I wrote a lot of these questions on my phone. I'm hearing doctors on a national level saying that for many survivals, it is going to boil down to ventilators, breathing machines to help those in the, with the worst case. Getting clear on how many we currently have, where they are, and how we can get any if we need it? What is the planning around the ventilators?
I can speak to that in part from Cottage, that Cottage, not only for ventilators, but negative pressure rooms, where COVID patients would be cared for initially. Cottage throughout its system has 47 negative pressure rooms already up and running with the capacity to add significantly larger numbers of those should they be needed. And Cottage has, as you know, multiple intensive care units, surgical, medical intensive care units, and pediatric intensive care and neonatal intensive care units. And we have, at the moment, my understanding is just shy of one ventilator per ICU bed. And there are caches of these in emergency supplies also available if more were needed, both from Cottage and, I believe, Dr. Ansor had mentioned earlier, some through their resources as well.
So just to let you know, we have five hospitals, and across the five hospitals, we have 60 airborne isolation rooms, and we've calculated that there are 32 vents available amongst all those hospitals. But we also, Santa Barbara County Public Health Department also has a cache of ventilators that can be used to assist our hospitals if needed.
Thank you.
I think that the ventilator question gets invoked when outbreaks like this are modeled for the most severe type of scenarios. And if you look at the most severe scenarios that have been modeled of this, ventilators do come in short supply. But I think, given what we're seeing globally, we're unlikely to see that severe of a scenario here.
Thank you. Bear with me. I did say I was going to ask some crazy questions. So the public is also wondering, again, worst-case scenario, people are hearing that it's going to get worse than, eventually it's going to happen here. So they're worried about if the city or the county has a plan for large quarantine places. Also, during the mudslide, we have a large population that commutes from, you know, Santa Maria or Ventura, Oxnard to work here, like nurses, doctors, police officers. So is there a plan in place for that?
Maybe I can speak to that. Large quarantine places are needed to watch over healthy people who've been exposed to a disease. So for instance, healthy cruise ship passengers have to stay somewhere being observed if they develop symptoms. That's a quarantine. If the virus would hit Santa Barbara area, we would be beyond capability of doing that. We would enter a different stage of public healthcare, which is called mitigation. So the most important part is really isolating sick people, and most of them can safely isolate at home. If they are really ill, that they require hospitalization, they will be isolated at a hospital. So we are not looking into venues that, you know, other than the federal government, they need venues where they, you know, quarantine repatriated people, for instance, you know, and they usually use air bases or military bases for that. But I don't anticipate that to be necessary for us in the city of Santa Barbara.
And Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Alejandra Gutierrez, and I also am not hearing any prohibition against inter-county travel, and so I'm not hearing that initially. I also want to say that during the debris flow, we had a full closure of transportation, and we were able to maintain services and actually identified city employees as essential, critical employees, working with the county through the office of emergency services, and got the employees that we needed to in. So that's firefighters, police officers, and like I mentioned, wastewater treatment operators and water treatment operators. So I'm confident that working with the county, getting the essential employees like Cottage employees and county personnel as well, that that will happen.
And so that's it for my questions, and thank you so much.
Mr. Oscar Gutierrez and then Mr. Jordan. Thanks for waiting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you stated that the governor declared a state of emergency, but that does not mean it's a state of emergency for our city. Is that correct? What would constitute a state of emergency for our city?
Well, we thought about that at length, and we came to the conclusion that we would elevate our level to a state of emergency once we hit certain targets. And we came up with three scenarios. One would be that we have our first actual case of confirmed COVID-19 in the county anywhere. That would be reason enough for us to declare local health emergency. The other options would be that our neighboring counties have like widespread community transmission, and because there's so much travel between the counties, you know, commuting and so forth, that would be reason enough for us to declare this. And if we had multiple cases that are being tested and we anticipate that those test results will likely become, come back as positive, we would also declare local health emergency. So we implemented these three triggers, and if any of those were to become reality, we would start the, we don't need to start the process. All it takes is really five minutes. We have everything prepared, and it would be just a formality from our perspective because we are prepared to do it, you know, in a matter of minutes.
Okay, so in all likelihood, there's a possibility that there's already somebody in our county that has it and they're just not aware. Is that correct?
Well, that's, that is very likely. However, if that's the case, that individual most likely is not very severely ill and hasn't, you know, sought medical care or, you know, is improving fairly quickly. So yes, we would most likely get our first severe case through the hospital setting.
Can you comment on whether or not you feel that our medical infrastructure is able to support an outbreak?
I feel quite confident because, you know, we have such an excellent cooperation with our healthcare partners, inpatient and outpatient. Cottage is, you know, exemplary in its outreach and large clinic systems like Sanson Clinic, for instance, who I believe take care of 75% of our population here, and also other clinics, you know, like the neighborhood clinics or the county healthcare centers. We have three of them in Santa Barbara. No, one is Copentvia, technically. No, one is Copentavia, technically. But I think we are well-equipped with excellent infrastructure. We have excellent cooperation with our emergency prepared teams, with our emergency doctors, with fire, county and city. And, you know, as a community, we have gone through so many different disasters already that it's a pretty closely knit community. And we've been preparing. And I think we will be very well-equipped if this became necessary.
Can you comment on how many personal protective equipment kits the medical currently has and how long that would last as our situation is now and how long it will last in case of an outbreak?
Well, I don't think I'm authorized to give you the exact number, but it's very large. We are also fortunate to have Direct Relief International here in our backyard, who are always extremely helpful to their hometown. And the CDC and the governor gave very clear guidelines on, under what circumstances certain brands of officially outdated N95 masks would be safe to use. And we have a large cache of those available, readily available. I think we are in good shape in the city of Santa Barbara with regard to the protective gear. Maybe one exception is a certain size of hand gloves. That is the most common size. But I think our partners are working tirelessly to get, you know, that covered as well. And maybe some surgical masks, which are, you know, in high demand. So, I think compared to other areas in the country, we are pretty well-equipped.
If we were to discuss an emergency ordinance banning social gatherings, how would that be implemented and enforced?
That's a Mr. Cologne question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez. The predicate for that kind of ordinance would be a local emergency declaration. And you would think through the kinds of restrictions for public facilities, like libraries, meaning publicly-owned facilities, libraries, council meetings, planning commission, and so forth. Then, you would also want to think through the kinds of restrictions you'd apply to private gathering places like movie theaters or libero Arlington, that kind of thing. But the predicate of having an emergency declaration is important because it justifies the use of the extraordinary power to essentially keep people out of public places during normal hours.
And if we were to enforce ordinance, an emergency ordinance, to ban social gatherings, is there someone that can comment on what the financial cost to the city that would be or the legal cost of any kind of legal action as a result of that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez. I can't speak to the cost of enforcement. I would imagine that we would find theaters cooperative in that circumstance because I also imagine there would be significant public concern about the health effects of gathering in public to back up your action on the emergency.
Mr. Casey, would you pencil that out and let us know? Maybe that's not something right off the top of your head.
You know, Madam Mayor and Councilman Oscar Gutierrez, it'd be really hard to pre-predict what the financial impacts would be to city revenues from canceling such gatherings because it's really the ripple effects on the local economy that you'd need to try to estimate and really have no benchmark or prior experience with that to build off of.
There any estimates on how fast this virus may mutate to become more aggressive or even more easily contagious?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Gutierrez. This virus mutates rapidly. It's in the family of viruses known as RNA viruses. And they are the most highly mutable viruses that we see. That doesn't mean it's gonna become more aggressive. It could mutate to become less aggressive. And that is something we see in these scenarios. Sometimes, as epidemics go on, actually mortality rates drop off over time as the virus becomes less lethal. So, we know it's changing. We know it changes quickly. There is some suggestion from some reports that there might already be more than one strain of this virus out there. However, we, you know, don't know which direction it will go in its change, as it changes. We just know it will change.
Is it currently the number of people catching the virus? Is it currently rising or is it starting to plateau or fall as of now?
Well, globally, the numbers are increasing rapidly. In some of the areas that were hit early on, there are some early reports suggesting maybe it's starting to plateau in those regions such as Wuhan, China, and in South Korea. But I think we cannot assume yet that that's the case and let our guard down, that this is going to, you know, stop spreading in a period of weeks. But we're, I would say cautiously hopeful that there might be some early favorable signs from China and South Korea.
There's no treatment or cure for it as of now?
There are some experimental treatments that have been tried and are in clinical trials here in the United States already and in other countries. But nothing has been proven to work at this point.
So, when it comes to, you know, DIY solutions, would things like lemon and lime juice or vinegar, would that be an alternative that could possibly kill germs and viruses?
You mean as a cleaning agent?
Correct.
Sort of thing?
Certainly, there's acetic acid in these. And they might offer some protection against some organisms. But we really don't have good data to address its impact on this virus.
And when it comes to the harbor, airport, Amtrak, Caltrans, MTD, what are the protocols or procedures if there's definitively someone in those outlets who is showing signs? Do you just stop all action and get that person treated or evacuated from the area? Do you stop everyone who's around them and get them quarantined? How's that work?
Paige, do you want to speak?
Well, assuming that we're notified of the individual on the train, plane, et cetera, we would work with the particular entities to begin doing some what we call contact tracing. But again, that would depend on some level of confirmation that the individual is, in fact, ill because of COVID-19 as opposed to influenza or something else. So, a lot would depend on notification. So, we know that with flights, we are notified through the California Department of Public Health that somebody has measles, TB, or anything else. There is a natural notification to the public health department. I have to tell you, we haven't had any experience with Amtrak or trains. So, I wouldn't know. But certainly, if we were notified, that contact tracing would occur.
Mr. Casey, I know that, you know, New York subway is having their crews wipe down the subways every night. Are we doing anything like that for MTD?
Madam Mayor and Councilman Oscar Gutierrez. So, MTD is its own separate authority. I assume they're doing additional deep cleaning, as most entities are. We are doing deeper cleaning of our city offices and buildings, of doorknobs and surfaces of common contact. I have not heard directly from MTD about what they're doing, though.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
We'll go to Mr. Jordan and then public comment. And I see some of you folks out there for the appeal. Please know that there's an item after this, ahead of the appeal. But maybe you're learning a lot through this presentation, so you're okay sitting out there. So, oh, Mr. Jordan, you, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can't possibly be another question left, can there? If some of you were as old as me, of course, you would have a rule against how many white jackets you're gonna be in front of in a given year. So, I'm already about five years screwed up right now. So, I don't know what we'll do. I have just a couple of questions that I haven't heard. And I also, you know, as Mr. Werff knows, that every chance I get this over the past 10 years as a planning commissioner, I have never failed to remind people that of communities in this state, few, if any, and I lean towards if any, have the luxury of the medical resources that we have available to a community this size. And that's spoken with no disrespect to the county. I would just admit my ignorance there. But a great deal of familiarity with Cottage and Sansom systems. And I am just encouraged to hear much of what I've heard. And I know that the background or the foundation of that is based in what a blessing we have to have these two medical organizations in our city. I may have missed, so I'll just apologize if I ask a question. But was, did anybody mention how many lab test kits we actually have available?
It's a rapidly changing number. So, LabCorp and Quest were coming up with about, combined, about 4,000 tests a day. Now, be advised, that is a national number. So, it's a pretty small number. But that is on their first day of business. So, we are hoping that they're ramping up significantly. The state of California has the most tests available through the public health labs. We have currently 15 labs running the tests already. And four more labs will be joining as of this week sometime. And so, we have a two-pronged approach so far. We have the commercially available labs for, you know, providers in the community, the hospital. And if we need a test result fairly quickly in order to prevent an outbreak, for instance, in a nursing home or in a facility like that, then we have a much faster turnaround of the test results with our public health lab system. The exact number, I'm not, honestly, not sure.
One of those tests, I'm, you know, only as smart as Google tells me. One of those tests requires a different time period or two tests, whereas the other test is quicker and one test?
Yes, that is true. The test that is used by the public health labs has to be validated if it becomes, if it turns out to be positive by a CDC lab. So, that is definitely a disadvantage. The other test is automatically valid when it becomes, when it comes back as positive in the commercial lab. So, the turnaround for the test result is longer with the commercial labs. However, it doesn't require a confirmation. Whereas the, so, with regard to public health, I would not wait for a confirmation test if five nursing home inhabitants, you know, residents would have a positive test result. I would trust that, obviously, because that would be an indication to act quickly. So, we are trying to reserve the quick turnaround tests for public health scenarios for the most part.
And then, you mentioned as one of your triggers, the number of tests being done. So, you're actively tracking countywide how many tests are being done daily?
Yes, because at least the tests that are run through the public health lab system, they have to be actually approved by myself. So, I know exactly how many tests were done on any given day. The lab tests that are run through LabCorp and Quest, they will report the result to the public health lab because it's a reportable disease. And, but those test results have a four-to-five-day turnaround. So, we will be notified regardless. It's just a slightly different timeframe.
Very good. And then, you talked about those triggers. And what I heard was you have potentially three different triggers to go to a, what you would call, local health emergency, right?
Yes.
And I heard a different question, or I heard a different, I heard a question from Councilmember Sneddon that you only answered part of it. And what I've heard a great deal of frustration with or lack of knowledge is the relationship between you, California Department of Public Health, and CDC and what you can unilaterally do regardless of what they are saying. So, could you talk a little bit about that? You are able actually, on your own, without DPH or without CDC, to state that there is a local medical emergency?
That is correct.
Okay. And any one of those three triggers, as you have this right now in your mind, would enable that to happen, correct?
Correct.
And so, that's been part of the frustration of the picture, I think, is who gets to do what? And do we have to rely on CDC and Washington arguing over what to tell people, what to not tell people? And so, I think that's reassuring. And then, of course, the other overwhelming input from residents has been regarding cruise ships. So, if you were, if you were to have one of those three triggers occur and you declared a local medical emergency, what would be your opinion of cruise ships continuing to disembark in Santa Barbara, given that that would be, the way I heard it, that would be, that would be your trigger to move towards a non-group gathering scenario? And how would that relate to cruise ships, in your opinion?
That's a very complex question because of the authorities that are involved in the cruise ship regulations. From the health department's perspective, it is up to the CDC because they are, they are usually running under foreign flags. So, they, you know, they are national waters. And so, they are under the federal government's authority, plus the captain of the port. For our area is in Los Angeles and Long Beach, who has the authority to, for quarantining. But if, so, they are very, very robust protocols in place.
On cruise ships?
Yes, the reporting, the reporting to the CDC. So, if they're ill people, sick people on the cruise ship, they are absolutely, it's mandatory for them to report it to the CDC. And they would obviously involve me as a local health officer and inform me. However, you could probably conjure up a scenario where everything falls through the cracks with CDC and with Coast Guard.
So, I've already done it for you. It's a seven-day cruise. You get infected somewhere on and off. You have a 14-day incubation once you show the symptoms, but you haven't shown the symptoms yet. And you disembark and you're potentially infecting, right? I've done that math, too, on how, where all those little gaps in protection could be, right? That's what you're referring to?
No, not really. I was thinking more along the lines that the CDC gives the okay. And I disagree with the CDC's decision. You know, that would be a scenario that is possibly possible. However, as you've heard, we are actually off the hook because the next cruise ship has already self-canceled. The federal government, I'm in contact with the state government because we have several port cities in the state, obviously. I do know of Monterey that they have requested for cruise ships to not disembark until further notice. And my understanding is the city of Santa Barbara is following suit. And so is the county of Santa Barbara. So, you put me a little bit on the spot. And I've been in contact with county council. And county council has been in contact with city council on these issues. They have pretty complex legal issues. But if push came to shove, I would have the authority to block a ship from disembarking.
Very good. So, let me take you off the spot. Mr. Cologne, so, you know, I'm pretty sure you see the chatter. So, 10 cruise ships through June, but almost half of them, four of them, are in a five-day period early in April, the sixth, seventh, eighth, and 11th, which conveniently comes after we've been out of session for two weeks also. And so, what you told us earlier was that the, that we are essentially not in a good position with a cruise ship tossing anchor down. position with a cruise ship tossing anchor down. They are certainly allowed to do that, but, well, then, I'll need some help on this memo, that, that it's a little gray after that in terms of using city, getting permission or not to use city facilities to come on shore, and that if there was a local public health emergency, I'm paraphrasing, we would still have to go ask permission from the Coast Guard captain of the port to stop or continue that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jordan, no, that, I did not mean to say a couple of those things.
Okay.
The first is that I did say, and I believe it's correct, that the district commander or the captain of the Coast Guard port of Los Angeles, Long Beach, has authority to either prevent ships entering navigable waters, or prevent them mooring or anchoring. Where I've advised that the city has authority is in its letter of understanding, which is essentially a license agreement. And to tell you what a license is, a license is like a ticket to the ballgame. If it rains, you don't get to go. It's not a lease, it's not ownership, it's not a property right in that sense. So we have these letters of understanding that essentially establish a rate schedule for the cruise lines. What I'm advising is that if there is a health emergency, the city would be well within its authority to not allow the use of city property for disembarking or coming ashore, whatever you want to call it, passengers leaving the ships. The second piece of what I said is that whatever order we issue about disembarking passengers has to be consistent with orders from the captain of the port or district commander. It doesn't mean that they have to mirror them, or that they are dependent on the orders, but they need, our orders need to be consistent with what the Coast Guard does.
Okay.
Is that better?
That's better than the sentence I'm reading, yes. So, and I appreciate that, because I think that's been overwhelmingly the, the amount of emails of concern I've gotten, so.
So back to your hypothetical.
Yep.
While the council is gone, your city administrator is empowered to make a proclamation of an emergency, should the county not do that. With the level of coordination that I see happening so far between the city, the county, the medical providers, and the Coast Guard, I have little doubt that we will know well in advance of the council's vacation, whether we're canceling disembarkation of passengers.
And Madam Mayor, and Councilmember Jordan, and that's why we sent a letter yesterday, even while this legal issue and kind of trigger points are being evaluated, we just wanted to be on the record, quick and early, that these upcoming ships, we don't think are appropriate to be coming right now. And so we sent the letter off immediately to do that, while we work through these other trigger points as we get closer to that date.
Very good. I think that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Ms. Gutierrez, did you have one more thing? I see your light on again.
Yes, just two quick questions. And this is for the public to understand. So a lot of people out there are very upset that why did it take so long for the city or the county to give us some, you know, answers to our questions? Can you guys explain to the public, you know, why there's time taken in order to give information?
Information on what?
On the virus. On the virus, and how the city and the county are taking steps to control it and monitor it?
I think we have, from the county public health perspective, we have had very frequent communication via press releases. We had multiple, myself included, multiple interviews with the local press. We have a public information officer who is full-time with a team on it, with social media messaging, with a website that is updated regularly. This is a very rapidly evolving situation, and whatever we are telling you today may be slightly or a lot different tomorrow evening this time. So it is very challenging to stay up to date. I've been on the, in phone conversations with CDC, CDPA, Southern California Health Officers, local partners like Cottage and Sansom and so forth, on a daily basis for several hours every day. So just as things go, it's, it's, it's a challenging situation, so I, I hope the public understands. We have to learn this as we go, and this is, we cannot really rely on, on old information, and it changes so fast, that is pretty breathtaking. I hope that with our new platform, is, which is much more user-friendly, it's all bilingual, and gives all, all the links to the CDC information, which is, by the way, really remarkably well-done. It is, it is a very difficult situation to, to spend that much time on learning about this, and at the same time communicating the changes. So I understand that there may have been some shortcomings, and I hope that our new impetus on this new website, on our extended phone services and so forth, will satisfy those needs better.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, very good. We'll go to public comment. Michael, you're first. Kathy Janega Dykes, Phil Walker, Jeff Bard, Milt Hess, Stephanie Armstrong, Carrie Kelly. So go ahead.
Am I turned on?
Yeah, thanks, Michael.
One thing I have noticed in my time here off and on is that there is no public bathrooms open at night. I mean, there's the one, I think, next to the county building, in the public garage, and besides that, there is no public bathrooms open. And we, yes, we have the concern of not only this virus, but we also have HEPA and multiple other things, this is a high transient area. Without a bathroom, that's causing quite an issue. And I've also seen multiple times the AMR, your contracted medical service, completely avoid people that definitely needed a health and wellness check. Now, if they don't feel comfortable with addressing the person, they could call the police for a health and wellness check. And so what I have a recommendation is, is that maybe you guys could consider opening that Sternwurst bathroom. Now, you've already got AMR parked right down there in that parking lot. Yes, they already sit at the parking lot right next to the skater park, so there would be someone present there, because they could just park in the roundabout, and then maybe we could have a bathroom open. It would be watched, and it would be considered.
Ms. Janega Dykes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Kathy Janega Dykes. I'm president and CEO of Visit Santa Barbara, and many thanks to the representatives of our medical industry for providing such valuable information, because the health of our neighbors and our visitors is of paramount concern to us. Today, I'm speaking behalf of one of our region's largest employers and taxpayers, the travel and hospitality industry. And I'd like to give you just a brief briefing on the primary markets and actions that were taken to lessen the impact of the economy to our community. And I say this because, as we heard earlier, that the situation is changing rapidly, so this is basically our plan as of today. As we all know, Santa Barbara is held in such high regard for, from visitors across the world. However, it's really important to understand that 82% of our region's hotel stays are actually sold to US residents. 18% come from international, 82 from the domestic, and 58% are Californian. Through February, visitation through the Santa Barbara South Coast has been in a relatively favorable position compared to the US overall, and partially because Santa Barbara is a boutique community, not this international gateway. But as we move further into this pandemic and the underlying risk to the US economy, we're increasingly concerned about the 13,000 jobs created by welcoming visitors to the South Coast. Visit Santa Barbara, as you all know, is fully staffed with seasoned experts to really to face this period of uncertainty. With the renewal of our tourism business improvement district recently, we have now new funds to be able to divert during this critical time. Last week, I reviewed our budget and reallocated funds to marketing programs with the highest likelihood of adding short-term visitation. Our updated media plan heavily prioritizes the drive market, we talked a lot about that earlier, over the direct-fly markets, and this, in current climate, we feel strongly that the regional travelers will be the most likely to prioritize Santa Barbara trips over other destinations. Concurrently, Visit Santa Barbara's popular third-night-free initiative, which was held over the shoulder season, now has been extended through June 30th, again, trying to encourage people to travel in this area. And please keep in mind that every decision that we're making is fact-based, it's based on data, not emotionally based. In the coming weeks, we'll continue to give you updates. We are providing weekly updates to our hospitality industry on the status of COVID, and ways and tools that they can use as well, too. And as Visit Santa Barbara focuses on motivating travel to our region during this obviously very unpredictable time, we know that the work of our public health professionals is even more taxing and yet critical to our success. You have our greatest respect and complete confidence, and thank you all for your ongoing support.
Thanks, Ms. Janega Dykes. Phil Walker, still here? Come on up.
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Mayor, excuse me, members of the city council. Let's see, it was November 6, 19, November 7, 1966, I was dropped off an OD bus from Sea-Tac to Fort Lewis, Washington, apparently right into a raging spinal, AKA bacterial meningitis epidemic. Never told anything. Apparently, seven, seven troops, recruits, passed away right in my barracks unit, and there were a lot more in the totality of Fort Lewis, and also Fort Ord, California. So the amount of disclosure today is just truly amazing, but I think the US government needs to look further and further, and all the medical staff, into what the whole situation is in Wuhan City in that province in China, because there's been so much talk about the use of night soil, you know, fecal application, transmissivity of the virus jumping from species to species, and we are so fortunate to here in the city of Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara County. The city has a state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facility, the water system is protected, segregated, and, you know, considering what I went through, and there was never any disclosure at all, and you were just running to the ground, even in basic training, let alone what happened in, throughout the world at that time, in Vietnam, the amount of what you would say are cautions that have been put out already about getting proper sleep, proper hygiene, it's, none of that was done. We were lucky to get three or four hours' sleep a night, then back in the field in constant rainfall up in the Seattle area. So all I can say is, I feel blessed to be blessed with a very strong immune system, too. And I'd like to thank the staff quickly from Cottage, because I'm a subcortical brain injury survivor, and Dr. Charles Lowenthal, excuse me, was my primary responder. My wife told me I nearly died, and...
Can you address us, please?
Yeah, after, after two years, she didn't tell me that, but I'm still here talking to you, so thank you very much.
Very good. Mr. Bard, next.
Hi, and honoring in the spirit of Dr. Lee Wen Liang, a true hero of this era. You may recall me from the South Coast Homeless Advisory Committee, Grant House nominated me, and I served the county. And I obtained a reputation for being a very harsh critic of the shelters and the warming center, and certain other agencies, for their lack of infection control. I fought the chief medical officer really quite vigorously over. I wanted isolation of coughing patients, I wanted head to toe, I wanted ventilation. I wrote up a five-point, a five-point pandemic plan addendum in the event of a pandemic in 2013. I submit a 10-point plan for Freedom Warming Center. All of that just got me, we almost ended up in civil court. Okay, but let's start with a clean slate. I criticize policies, and I don't attack individuals personally. Okay, please, consider suspending the vacation if this gets bad. Please consider going to three-minute public comment. Immediately, suspend ticketing and harassment of people who camp outdoors. Okay? Look, protocol schmardical. They don't follow the TB, protocol. I have identified in my research at least three cover-ups by shelter systems in New York State, Jacksonville, Florida, and Ground Zero, Los Angeles Rescue Mission, had a TB, outbreak of a novel strain. CDC dispatched a team, that's the last we ever heard of it. And I went to the county, and I warned, and it was coming, and it came. So now, thank you, council. Excellent questions, Harmon, and over here, Jordan, I'm new to this council. Excellent questions. I'm very impressed, and most of the issues that I had were addressed, except a couple. The pseudoscience that I've railed against for years is feeding the wet markets in China that are run by organized crime, which is where you get exotic species from all over the world, and you get viral mutagenesis, and the virus genome trades, and this is the cause of the problem. It's, it's going to come again. Now, finally, our big hope is young people. At first, I was depressed to hear that young people aren't affected, because I thought, they're just going to go party and, and pass the same, share the same pie, and it looks like us old people do. Then I realized, no, there's a window of opportunity, because with viral mutation, it could mutate and start going after young people. So we have a limited time, if we can get these kids into virology and immunology, these fields are exciting fields, and we have people in this town who can motivate youth. And if we can get youth working on it, they can go in and do clinical care, and they don't have to worry, because if they get sick, they just get a mild illness. So here's our window of opportunity, if we can mobilize youth and get, you know, university people, get these kids working on this before it mutates and goes after them, and it will mutate. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hess, are you still here? Ms. Armstrong, after you, Carrie Kelly will be the final speaker. Welcome.
Mayor Mario, members of city council, good afternoon. My name is Milt Hess, and I'm here to offer my perspective on the COVID-19 epidemic. The attention that it's receiving nationally in the press, and just being front of mind with everyone, is remarkable. I don't think I've seen anything like this, well, I don't remember anything like this in my life. But psychologists have a name for this phenomenon. It's called the availability bias, and it's a cycle that feeds on itself, generating concern in the public, generating press, generating more concern, and it's not necessarily proportionate to the nature of the, the risk. Now, I don't want to get sick with coronavirus, with COVID-19. I'm well into the elderly category of people most at risk with the disease, but when I compare the response to this epidemic with other preventable public health problems, I have to urge you to keep things in perspective. For example, in 2017, guns killed nearly 40,000 people in the United States. In 2018, there were over 36,500 traffic fatalities in the United States. And during the 2018-19 flu season, over 34,000 people died in the US. Now, we reluctantly accept these preventable deaths, because we don't accept what it would take to prevent them. Tighter controls over guns, more stringent controls over impaired driving, enforced flu vaccinations, and quarantine of the sick. So I pose the question, how much are we willing to disrupt our normal lives to address the threat of the coronavirus? And that's an open question. By all means, we should take reasonable precautions to avoid getting sick and making others sick, but a massive disruption to our normal lives... but a massive disruption to our normal lives because of this new disease does not appear to me to be a proportionate response compared to the other hazards that I just described. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Armstrong?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I'm Stephanie Armstrong, the interim executive director of our Chamber of Commerce here in the Santa Barbara region. On behalf of more than 600 members, I want to express our appreciation for the updates and information shared by our public health officials this afternoon. The health and safety of our employees, employers, and the larger community is our top priority. Toward that end, we are committed to making preparations for operational continuity plans, ensuring that remote work is an option for employees to the greatest extent possible, and reminding all members of our organization and community of best practices with regard to public health and safety. We believe there is much that the city can do to support the community in preparing for the coronavirus, and we have heard about some of that work this afternoon. We ask that the city leadership continue to follow the advice of public health officials and refrain from taking sweeping actions that would limit our region's social and economic activity unless advised to do so by those officials. We understand that there is a great deal of concern and a considerable amount of misinformation circulating, but we do have access to expert advice, and we hope our community will rely on that. It's too early to shut down smaller, community-based gatherings of chambers of commerce, score chapters, economic development groups, and others where attendees are coming from within the tri-counties where there is no community spread. We encourage the continuity of business operations with the necessary precautions that are already in place to address public safety. As time goes on, further actions may be required, but to put a restriction on business activity that's crucial to the regional economy does not seem necessary at this time. We urge you to let public health take the lead on these issues, on addressing these issues. Our businesses are extremely resilient, but they get that resilience in part because of public agencies taking necessary but proportionate actions when it comes to moments of crisis. Thank you for your time.
All right, very good. Ms. Kelly, with Downtown Santa Barbara, final speaker.
Madam Mayor and City Council members, thank you for having me today and allowing me to speak. I want to echo what Stephanie said, or Ms. -- Stephanie from the chamber. I'd say this is an unprecedented time with this virus. I haven't been in Santa Barbara that long, but I have learned that Santa Barbara is a very resilient community and I'm very happy about that. It is vital for our economy that we have a response to this illness that is based on data and a strategy that is nimble enough to be changed if necessary. You know, it's wonderful that the City Council meets so frequently. Usually, where I'm from, it's usually once a month, so this is very helpful, and you can stay up to date on these issues. I would urge caution in taking any longer-term action, but focus on short-term actions and approaches. Downtown Santa Barbara will be working with our partners like the chamber and Visit Santa Barbara on a response and assisting all of our members. We just had a downtown conference scheduled for Wednesday through Friday this week that was canceled, but we're in close communication with other downtown organizations as well in California, and we'll share any pertinent information as that becomes available. Thank you for your time.
Very good. That closes public comment. Mr. Friedman, did you have closing remarks, or... Go ahead.
Again, I'd just like to give some remarks, just to kind of summarize what I'm hearing today, and hopefully, kind of a few things moving forward, especially in particular to cruise ships. So, first, I'd like to thank all our public health officials that came today and our first responders. I think we all learned a lot, the public learned a lot, and thank you for answering our questions and having a really good discussion here today, and my colleagues for asking really great questions. A lot of those came from the public as well. And I also want to thank the public who's contacted us with a lot of their concerns. And as we can see, there's a lot of thought and preparation that is going into the planning and response efforts here, and due to the fast-changing nature of this, sometimes it is hard to communicate that, or difficult to communicate that to the public because it's so rapidly changing. But we are doing our best, being government and our public health partners, to provide the adequate information. When we think about it, the primary goal, one of the primary functions of government is the protection of public health and safety, and we see today that this circumstance we're in is essential that we do that, and that we have coordinated efforts, because something like this has no regional boundaries. And in terms of just moving forward, I especially appreciate our last few commenters from the chamber, downtown organization, and others, in terms of, we need to act on information from the scientists, the public health experts, and agencies that are the forefront of these decisions. And as we've heard today, and some include the Center for Disease Control, Department of Public Health and Human Services, California Department of Public Health, our own local public health, the U.S. Coast Guard, the governor and state legislatures, we're all working on this and trying to coordinate these decisions, because what we don't want to do is act independently of each other, which could lead to unintended consequences and actually be more disruptive and make it more difficult for the public to understand what's going on. In particular, it's not just cruise ships that are these discussions, but also the airport, this issue came up today, Amtrak, should things go get more cases 101, and how people are coming in and out. So, those are all decisions that we need to be based on science and data. Individually, I've spoken over the weekend with former supervisor, now our congressman, Salud Carbajal. I spoke with his chief of staff, Jeremy Tittle. I also spoke with our Assemblymember, Monique Lamon, just to express what we're hearing here at the council to them. And Congressman Carbajal's office is committed to working on our behalf, if we need to, in terms of the Coast Guard and helping that we need. So, I'd like to ask if one of the suggestions is for our staff, Mr. Casey and Mr. Cologne, to work with the county public health and county council and the Coast Guard, just to come up with a plan, so we're all coordinating. I think I'm hearing that, but I want to put that out there on the record, so that we do have, we have that communication with them in terms of the cruise ships going forward, at least through these ones going in through June, to have those discussions. And at the federal level, Jeremy told me that, you know, the federal government has passed over $8 billion towards this. They're looking at more potential measures to look at a national level of how we can respond to this at a national level. And Assemblymember Lamon also expressed that the governor and state legislature are working to provide the resources that our public health needs in this state. So, there's a, from all levels, it's going forward, and we're looking at all things that we need to do. And then, finally, I just, in terms of just a measured response and basing our decisions on the public health aspects of it, we also need to consider, if we were to act prematurely or independently of, say, Galita or Carpenteria, there are effects that could come into our vulnerable populations, and especially those who are seniors or those who are lower income that don't necessarily have the ability to lose paychecks. I think our last few speakers mentioned that, because it also gets into the rent, it gets into just your utilities, and to make sure that we're basing this so that there is the least impacts to our most vulnerable residents in terms of their economic well-being. So, with that, I just encourage us to continue those discussions with the Coast Guard on the cruise ships, and I really appreciate the coordinated effort that we have here and the expertise. Someone mentioned it, that in our community, we have, I think Mr. Jordan might have mentioned it, but we're so fortunate to have the level of expertise in the medical community here for our size, and just look forward to continuing to receive updates on this and the coordinated efforts, and appreciate all that everyone's doing on behalf of the residents of our city.
Thanks. Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will keep my comments very brief. I imagine our public health experts would like to get back to their good work. So, first, I just want to take a second to acknowledge the many people who have emailed us and called, and those that are here today and watching at home. We live in an era of misinformation, and the commitment that I've seen from all of you to getting real, true, accurate information, it's very much should be applauded, and I really appreciate that. And additionally, in so many of the messages and calls that I've received, that I know we've all received, a lot of you began your comments and questions not talking about concern for yourself but for others, and how elderly folks and people with compromised immune systems might be impacted. And to me, that's just so representative of the Santa Barbara ethos, and it really reminded me of how proud I am to live here and to be your neighbors. Of course, a huge thank you to our county public health officials and those that are working in conjunction with them for coming today. You guys are really at the heart of dealing with this, and we're so grateful for your expertise and your leadership. It's clear that there are some unknowns right now, but what we do know is this: here in the county of Santa Barbara, and through county public health in particular, we have all the tools in place we need to deal with whatever might come. Here in the city in particular, I really want to highlight to folks that we have an organized and extensive contingency plan in place to ensure that our community continues to enjoy the level of service that they deserve and that they've come to expect. I think that's a really important point that us here at City Council can drive home. On cruise ships, clearly, we've laid out that we have a plan for that, too. And that plan's been working thus far with the cancellation of the ship on the 24th. That's a real success, and I have every belief that we will continue to enjoy that level of success. And in the event that that changes, I know we are all committed to doing everything within our power to ensure that our community stays safe, and we'll continue to monitor that and to take steps as necessary. So, I'll just close again by thanking all of you for your good work and for this really amazing presentation. I have learned a ton. In my house, we're washing our hands a lot. We are taking precautions to disinfect, which is pretty hard to do with a toddler, but we're doing it. I hope all of you are doing the same, and I think by doing that, working together, we can keep our city safe and keep everyone healthy. Thank you.
Mr. Oscar Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who came to speak and educate us on the situation. I don't feel comfortable with, at the level of precaution that we're taking, and I know a lot of the residents don't either. I strongly believe that if there was an outbreak here, it possibly could have been prevented by us taking a little more of aggressive steps. I don't feel comfortable with the cruise ships coming, at least until the numbers start to drop. Like, they said it themselves, that they're not dropping, they're just going up. I know that we're a tourist-based economy. We have four avenues of people coming in and out of this town, because we're a full-service city, and that makes me worried. So, I would like us to discuss banning the cruise ships until the numbers start to drop, and even restricting the amount of social gatherings that we have. I kind of want to throw that out there without officially making a motion, just to gauge people's opinions and thoughts on the matter. Thanks.
Well, people are asking, what are we going to do if the cruise ship insists on coming? But I think what we've heard is that the Port Authority and the Coast Guard Authority is saying, don't let people get off of the ships, right? And so, I think Mr. Gutierrez, if it comes to that, will take action. I don't think we need to ban cruise ships right now. They're at bay, and we can certainly take it up. And then, what I've heard about social gatherings is that if the county public health declares a local emergency, that would be the first step to taking action related to limiting assemblies. Am I getting that right, Mr. Casey?
Yeah. Madam Mayor and Councilman Oscar Gutierrez, let me state where staff's perspective is on the cruise ships first. I think we're in agreement that right now is not the time to have cruise ships coming to Santa Barbara through June, and that's what the letter to the cruise ship industry yesterday was saying, and that's where the coordinated effort and dialogue that's occurring amongst all the different agencies. My waterfront staff is talking to county public health almost on a daily basis about it, and county supervisors Hart and Williams sent a letter concurring our request to the cruise ship industry, so there's coordination occurring there as well. I'm speaking frequently with my counterpart and the CEO of the county, Ms. Mia Sota, and city attorney is coordinating with the county council at the county as well. So, I think there is agreement. As has been expressed a number of times, it's really complicated, and we got to be strategic about how we kind of go about doing that, but I think the goal is, we don't want cruise ships coming between now and June, and so we're going to continue to execute on that, and unless I hear otherwise, that's the way staff's going to act going forward.
And then, closing public spaces. We're ready to do that if there's an actual epidemic in our city and county, I think. So, Mr. Cologne?
Madam Mayor, as I said when I responded to Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez, it would be necessary to have an emergency declaration of some form if we are going to take urgent action to shut down public gatherings.
Are you satisfied, or Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's just that the governor already issued a state of emergency, and the physicians have stated that, that pretty much as soon as one confirmed case is in the county, that they most likely will declare a state of emergency. I just think that, why would we wait for that to happen when we can take steps now to try to prevent it? That seems to be some of the sentiment that our residents are asking us to take measures to do to keep them safe. There's a lot of our community who are vulnerable, and some of them can't be here physically to speak because they're scared, and I feel like we should just uphold our oath to keeping the people as safe as possible.
Ms. Sneddon? Ms. Gutierrez, your light's on, but I think you just had it on from last time. So, Ms. Sneddon, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just so appreciate you taking time out of actually combating this epidemic to spend time here with us. Just to reiterate, I think that we need to stay vigilant, stay prepared, be on alert. I really appreciate the staying nimble approach, that this is quickly evolving, and I personally feel at the ready to take your information and advice on how to act quickly. Councilman Oscar Gutierrez, I am prepared for that type of action. If there's a trigger, and once that happens, I'm a little bit concerned about acting too prematurely, although I want to be at the ready to act quickly should these triggers occur, which it sounds like it's not a matter of if, but when. And I think I'm hearing that we'll be prepared when that time comes. Really emphasizing staying in communication, very appreciative of this communication and the website that you'll be launching, and having one central place where we can get our information is really going to help with the spread of misinformation. I feel like at a national level where we have mixed information at different times, I'm going to rely on our local health officials to really be looking at Santa Barbara and how this is affecting us here, and I'm going to make the very big assumption and fair assumption that your care for this community being safe is as great or greater than ours. We are all in this together, but I do want to be ready to act quickly should that come. On the cruise ships, I think it's a little bit different situation because of the potential for going to port, to port, to port, and spreading quickly. That I would be in favor of being much more proactive about, and just, let's just not have that here to as much as we legally can. I just want to voice that, that I just don't think this is the time for cruise ships, as we're all in agreement, but I just want to state that. And I'm going to count on our local health experts to let us know when we have options to be more proactive, that this is a request for me, and I think several of us, that if there are things that we could be doing more proactively, if there's more we could be doing to head it off ahead of time, an invitation to please let us know that I believe we want to be proactive, or at least know that the options that are available to us. And this has been so incredibly helpful answering our questions, and thank you for taking the time.
Mr. Friedman, and then Mr. Jordan. Thank you, folks.
I just want to clarify for the public in light of Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez's comments regarding cruise ships, and Mr. Casey said it, but I want to clarify it from my own perspective, is that we are moving... my own, from my own perspective, is that we are moving forward with basically moratorium on them. The direction is to provide that at this point through the CDC travel restrictions on cruise ships advisory they have is working. And so, the direction that I'm supportive of is for our city attorney and whatever city staff we need to work with, the county public health, the county council, and the Coast Guard to work through these legal issues. At the same time, we're asking voluntarily for them to comply because that's the quickest route, actually, or one of the potentially quickest route to get them to not come to port. And then there's this backup option about them disembarking that we're also exploring. So, I just want to make that clear that from what I'm hearing, it's unanimous support up here from the council and our city staff is no cruise ships through the scheduled ones in June, then there is a summer break, and then we'll address those as conditions change and we get more information. So, I just want to be clear on that on the cruise ships and the direction that I'm hearing from all of us up here.
Thanks. Mr. Jordan?
For weighing in, I would echo the comments on aggressiveness with cruise ships, if you want to call it that, and just for the reason of the density of the number of people there, their historical ability to pass stuff amongst themselves that far exceeds cars driving into town, trains coming into town, or planes coming into town. In terms of what's going on or what should be going on with group gatherings, I also, my response right now to somebody who would want to talk about that is that if you have a concern, you just don't go do it, and it doesn't need to be martial law yet. I will tell you, in my day job, this is already happening. I handle a ton of accounts that start with the two words, "Santa Barbara," just start adding "Museum of Art," "Museum," moxie after that, and they are already questioning, back to their insurance carriers, what they're going to do, how they're going to handle their group gatherings, should they start to worry about that. So, these kind of things are already happening out in the public sector away from the medical industry. So, these aren't conversations we're having in a vacuum. They're taking place constantly all day long right now, and I think at this point in time, it's just prudent to say that if you do have a concern, that you practice social distancing or no group gatherings, and then wait for it to either improve or get worse, and then revisit it.
Thank you. My comments would be that I will contact Amtrak and MTD. That's my role as mayor, is to be in touch with those outside agencies and find out about their disinfecting practices, and I'll write a memo to the group. I haven't heard anything about closing the airport. I've heard from some of the business people, they're concerned about that. We are proud of our airport and also proud of its protocols for safety and public health. So, that's in the mix. Of course, we're keeping an eye on the airport. Thanks to everybody who wrote emails. I think I answered them all. I didn't get through all the phone calls that came, and I called somebody back. I was on the phone last night, and then they wanted to talk about potholes and other stuff. So, just, I'm trying to get through my returning phone calls, just to let you know out there. And then if we get to the point of ordinances related to helping workers who are sick or closing public spaces, we're ready to do that. We need to let the public know. I like how Ms. Harmon said it, that it's public health and safety is a very serious responsibility that we have, and we're doing our best. We're doing our best with the cruise ships within the legal framework that we can. And so, Mr. Gutierrez, you're on record with your comments. I don't hear other people from the council saying, "Let's go ahead and do a ban." That's a pretty strong statement. So, I'm getting ready to close this hearing, but I see your light on, sir.
Yes, thank you. I just want to emphasize that other cities are, you know, shutting down major festivals like Coachella and Stagecoach and South by Southwest. I just got notified that UCSB is not going to allow attendees to watch sporting events, and I believe City College is doing the same. So, I guess just going off of what Mr. Jordan stated, could we just encourage the public and organizations to cancel themselves, so to speak, as opposed to it being as aggressive and coming out with an ordinance? Can we do that? Can we make a statement? Can the county do that? Are you doing that?
You're, I mean, you're right. I got an email, too, that UCSB is limiting in-person meetings if they count among their research groups. So, people are taking initiative on their own, groups are. So, you, did you have a question for our county representatives? You said, are they?
Yeah, so are they just encouraging organizations to basically do the social distancing themselves without having to have any type of emergency ordinance implemented?
Sir, go ahead.
At this point in time, since we don't have any community transmission in the city of Santa Barbara or the county of Santa Barbara or in neighboring counties, we are only recommending self-imposed abstinence, so to speak, from, you know, going to these events. We are not in a position, we don't have the data, the science, that this would be helpful at the moment, and it would harm the industries. So, it's sort of a fine line, you know, and to time that perfectly is really an art. And I appreciate your concern for your constituents and the city at large, and believe me, I have the same. But we have to weigh the pros and the cons, and I think without any proof that there is any sustained, you know, transmission in the community, I feel pretty hard-pressed to implement such draconic measures at this point. Now, this could change overnight, you know, and it's a challenging situation because what we want to do is we want to protect as many healthy people so that they can still stay healthy, and the sick wants to get their care, but we also don't want to impose unnecessary harm to people due to, you know, shutting down whole industries and so forth. So, it's a very fine line, and I'm just hoping that our timing will be perfect. So, bear with us. For the time being, I, we did send out a press release for a strong recommendation, especially for vulnerable people, to consider that for themselves. We're trying to empower those people also, you know, because everybody has to take care of themselves and their family and their, you know, first. And once we cross this threshold of having confirmed, multiple confirmed cases, which, you know, constitutes transmission in the community, then, you know, we are ready to make the next step.
Okay, I, so I'll just speak for myself that I understand and respect your position. I don't entirely agree with it, but I will just ask the community to voluntarily contemplate rescheduling some of these events until at least the numbers start to drop globally. Thank you.
I think that's a very reasonable approach.
Thank you. With thanks to Dr. Prestowski, Ms. Batson, Dr. Ansor, Mr. Werft, Dr. Fisk, Dr. Wilson, all of our city staff, chief mails, thank you so much, everyone, for the information and the discussion. We'll close this item, and we need a break. It's been a while. We'll take a five-minute break. Thanks.